I would like to call the November 6, 2023, regular meeting to order. First order of business, we will have the invocation by Janelle Galloway, our Assistant County Manager, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from the representatives from Onslow County Council of Veterans, and they will lead the board in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Galloway?
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Today, as we recognize the Onslow County Council of Veteran Organizations, we ask that you bless them abundantly for the hardships they faced, for the sacrifices they made, and for their many contributions to our nation. May your blessing be upon us always. Amen. Now with deep respect and reverence for all the faiths, beliefs, and tradition of those gathered here today, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, guys. It was great seeing you, Paul. I'm looking around the audience, and we've got several elected officials here that I would like to point out and recognize. First, we have Rick Grant from North Topsail Beach Alderman and his lovely wife Lisa. Welcome to the meeting. And then we have Jeff Gwinzel, the Mayor of Holly Ridge. Welcome to our meeting, Jeff. And also, we've got in the back, always here, always guarding us and protecting us, we have Chris Thomas, Onslow County Sheriff. Welcome aboard. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cellphones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedures, Commissioners shall reserve responses until the end of the meeting. So right now, with the next item is the adoption of the agenda.
I'll move it through.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The adoption is, or the agenda is approved. Now, I'll move to item two, which is the approval of the consent items on the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have adoption of the menu, or the menu, agenda. Okay, at this time, item three, we'll move to public comments. Mr. Smitherman, do we have anybody signed up for public comments?
Yes, yes, we do, sir. Prior to beginning, though, I would like to address the public as to the rules for the public comment period. Citizens may address the Board for no more than five minutes on any issue upon which the Board has control. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual Commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedures, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner comment period at the end of the agenda. Mr. Chairman, our first speaker is Alderman Rick Grant of North Topsail Beach.
Thanks. I wanted to give the Board an update, kind of what's going on in the town. This month, we're going to be starting another part of the beach project, which will finish from the Surf City line up to the connection with the work we've done. And then in the spring, we're going to do what's called the Phase Four thing. The idea behind those two is it'll make them into engineered beaches, which means that for the purposes of the town, under FEMA rules, an engineered beach, not, we know, we don't just get money to fix the dunes, we actually get at the big beach. So it's a big deal for us and for the town. We were able to obtain $12 million in grant. It's from the state. Interestingly enough, through our town manager and our beach engineer, we actually could use the FEMA reimbursement for five as the matching, so the town didn't have to put that up. We've got a fire truck being done. We're also going out right now for bids on the new fire station in the south end of the town. I think I've mentioned that before. That's about 35 years old with a tin roof, and you can imagine it needs to be replaced. And so we're going out, we're hopeful, obviously, that the cost will come into something that we can do. And so that's a very brief thing, but also in terms of a presentation I put together, I've been sharing with a number of people related to activities going on, an important part of that, a couple of pages, were basically highlighting our partnership with you all and how much we appreciate what you guys have done for us. The fire tax is going to be very helpful for us in that fire station. I don't know what you all are seeing, but right now, everything has gone crazy in terms of cost, and so we want to keep that under control as best we can. The money that you've been giving us to, or been allowing us to have, to start paying off the loan that we've had for the southern part of the town goes into that as well. And so I think for the first time, we're in a position, fiscally, where we're pretty solid, given where interest rates are going, what costs and stuff are doing, the idea for us to do is to plan. And we're looking at making sure we've got money to work on the beaches every year, and we've put together a capital projects fund. We're putting the money aside for those type of things. Fire station was that old, I think the last fire truck we had is 2008. We were able to, we're purchasing one of those, and we've got a grant from the water company that it's a zero-interest loan for us to be able to do that as well. So my big thing today was to talk about how much we appreciate what you guys are doing with us, and if there's anything that we can do or I can do to even make that better, we'd really appreciate it, because I think that the relationship between the town and the county has come a long way, at least in the couple of years I've been involved in it. And so thank you very much to everybody up here, and we love working together with you guys, and if there's anything we can do better, let me know.
Mr. Chairman, the second speaker is Mayor Jeff Gwinzel of Holly Ridge.
Good morning, Commissioners. Right now, the town of Holly Ridge is facing a crisis, let's just be honest, with some mold in our low-income housing. Holly Plaza is the name of our Section 8 HUD housing. The units were built in 1981, so they're over 40 years old. A little over a month ago, a resident came into our town hall with a Petri dish of mold that she had grown from a mold kit that she had purchased, that she had placed up in her ductwork. And immediately, our town staff went over and started looking, investigating, and it's not good. An emergency meeting was called for our town council back on October 10th, where the council was briefed on the situation, and since then, we've been trying our best to react and to see what we could do to, first of all, get these residents out of this unhealthy situation so that mold testing could occur. Last week, mold testing did commence, and it did complete this past Saturday evening, and in about another week, we should have the results back from that mold testing. The town ordered that and also paid for expedited lab results for that. In the meantime, the town allocated up to $200,000 to pay for temporary housing for 30 days for these 98 citizens, and so they are staying at rooms to suites right here in Jacksonville. They were able to give us a negotiated lower rate, and one thing that's really nice about this is they have a full kitchenette there, and so they're able to make their own meals. But the unfortunate thing is it's 27 miles away, so that's a logistical issue that the city of Jacksonville immediately helped us with busing, starting this last Monday morning, a week ago, to be able to get the 16 children that need to go to school on our part of Onslow County. Then Onslow County Schools, Onslow County was able to provide a school bus starting last Wednesday, and so thank you for what you guys were able to do to help provide assistance for these families. It's a bad situation. We're eagerly waiting the results. I do not know what the results are going to say and what remediation will be required or what can happen. It appears that due to improper Hurricane Florence repairs, that a lot of the venting, ridge vents and venting on the gables was improperly done, causing at least a portion of this mold. It appears that some HVAC system maintenance that allowed drains to clog up and for the air conditioning units to pour water into the walls also seems to be something that may be contributing to this, and possibly some moisture barrier issues at the ground level as well, too. So we don't know exactly what caused this, but we know there's possible multiple factors that may, and those questions will certainly be answered in the future. In the meantime, I want to thank, I had a meeting with pretty much your staff here before, and the next level after physical safety is now we need to start looking at the emotional. This right here is bringing up a lot of PTSD for some of our residents who have dealt with being displaced after Hurricane Florence, being evicted from homes for various reasons, and just going through hardships like this, not knowing when or if they will have a home in the future. And so we've already put together a plan with your great staff here, and Wednesday night, there's going to be a pizza party with the representative from your social services that will be able to provide information to see what resources are available to each and every person, and so I just want to thank you. Thank that there is a government that can help out when a situation seems much larger than what you can handle, and certainly, this situation is larger than what the town of Holly Ridge can handle on its own. So I want to thank the county. The city of Jacksonville's been very helpful. The smaller the government agency, the more quicker we can react, and so thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, there are no further speakers.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smitherman, we're going to move to item four. We have two proclamations have been prepared for presentation, and Janelle Galloway, our Assistant County Manager, shall read the proclamation. Janelle?
Thank you, sir. This proclamation is for Veterans Recognition Month. Onslow County recognizes the value, the commitment, and the immeasurable contribution of our veterans. The Onslow County Council of Veteran Organizations represents a military coalition serving our community. The council promotes the interests, the efforts, and awareness of all issues facing our veterans. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow Proclamation, Veterans Recognition Month, 2023. Whereas on Veterans Day, America pauses to honor every service member who has ever worn one of our nation's uniforms. Each time our country has come under attack, they have risen in her defense. Each time our freedoms have come under assault, they have responded with resolve. And whereas, as we pay tribute to our veterans, we are mindful that no ceremony or parade can fully repay that debt. We remember that our obligations endure long after the battle ends, and we make it our mission to give them the respect and the care that they have earned. And whereas, under the most demanding of circumstances and in the most dangerous corners of the earth, America's veterans have served with distinction. And whereas, on Veterans Day and every day, we celebrate their immeasurable contributions, draw inspiration from their examples, and renew our commitment to showing them the support of a grateful nation. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners declares November as Veterans Recognition Month in Onslow County and encourages all citizens to recognize the bravery and the sacrifice of our veterans through appropriate public or private ceremonies and gestures. Presented the sixth day of November 2023. I'd like to read the Onslow County Council of Veteran Organizations, American Legion Post 265, American Legion Post 78, Swansboro, Disabled American Veteran 16, Disabled American Veterans, Fleet Reserve Association, Marine Corps League 262, Marine Corps League 262 Auxiliary, Marine Corps League 1407, Military Order of the Purple Heart, National Association of Black Veterans 54, National Association of Black Veterans 88, Non-Commissioned Officers Association, Onslow County Veterans Services, Retired Affairs Officer, Rolling Thunder NC-5, Veterans of Foreign Wars 9133 Jacksonville, Veterans of Foreign Wars 9960 of Swansboro, and Veterans of Foreign Wars 9983 Holly Ridge, Women's Marines Association NC-1. Representatives from Onslow County Council of Veteran Organizations will accept this proclamation. Vice Chairman has requested that Commissioner Buchanan present the proclamation.
Appreciate it. It's a privilege and an honor for me to do this for our veterans. Our veterans mean a lot to us in Onslow County, and our Onslow County Commissioners have done a lot for our veterans, and we're going to do more for them every time we get a chance. They do so much for this community, and they're so valuable. I don't know what the numbers are, but I believe that we're one of the largest counties in the state of North Carolina with veterans in our services, and they mean a lot to me, being a Vietnam veteran, and what I want to say to all of our brothers and sisters is welcome home.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Onslow County Council of Veteran Organizations, I'm honored to receive and accept this annual proclamation. Thanks to the Onslow County Board of Commissioners for recognizing the veterans in Onslow County each year during November as Veteran Recognition Month. Behind me, you see some of the representatives of the Veterans Council here in Onslow County, who are very active. They do good work on behalf of the veterans, provide awesome services for the benefits of the veterans here in Onslow County, and I want to thank them as well for participating in this veteran community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. (APPLAUSE).
Real quick, I just want to commend all the veterans that came today, and specifically, Mr. Joe Dwayne, who's the Director of our Veterans Affairs. As you can see, just these individuals standing up that are veterans that fought for our country or served, and I can look through the audience, and I know personally, there are more veterans that are sitting down here, and there's veterans on this board as well, and there are veterans in the back to include our sheriff. So I just wanted to thank you, from one veteran to another, for everything you've done. You gave an open check to the government when you signed up to defend the Constitution in this country, and I'm proud to be a veteran as well, and thank you very, very much. I appreciate it.
State of North Carolina, County of Onslow Proclamation, National Adoption Awareness Month, 2023. Whereas during National Adoption Awareness Month, we seek to increase awareness of adoption issues and bring attention to the need for adoptive families for children, youths, and teens in the foster care system. And whereas, this year's National Adoption Month theme is empowering youth finding points of connection. Pursuing permanency for teens can be challenging, but small steps along the way can make all the difference. And whereas, youth leaving foster care without being adopted or without permanent connections face ongoing challenges with employment, education, and mental health, as well as have an increased risk of homelessness and human trafficking. And whereas, during Adoption Awareness Month, we celebrate all the families who have opened their homes to children through adoption, including the seven children and youth adopted from foster care last year in Onslow County, one of those being a teenager. And whereas, the Onslow County Department of Social Services is committed to supporting children, youth, and teens in foster care waiting for adoption and supporting adopting families through education, services, and support. And now therefore be it proclaimed, that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners acknowledges November as National Adoption Awareness Month and urges all residents to support our youth by opening their hearts and homes through adoption, becoming foster parents, or supporting adoptive and foster parents in our community. Presented on this sixth day of November 2023. Representatives from Onslow County Department of Social Services will accept this proclamation. The Vice Chairman has requested that Commissioner Carpenter present the proclamation.
Well, it truly is a privilege to stand up here and recognize each and every one of you, and I'm sure there's a great force behind you as well that contribute to providing services for the most vulnerable in our community, as well as the future of our community here. And we just want to say thank you so much for investing in them, for caring for them, for your professionalism, and especially for making the connections that hopefully mean a very bright future for children who wouldn't otherwise have that kind of care. So we thank you all for your tender hearts and all that you do that we don't see, because I'm sure it's tireless work, so thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Carpenter and the rest of the Commissioners, I would like to just thank you on behalf of our staff, and more importantly, for the children and youth that have achieved adoption, and it's so important, and I appreciate you recognizing adoption awareness this month so we can look towards permanence for our children in care. And I will turn it over to Tina for a moment.
Good morning. First, I'd like to say to the County Commissioners, thank you all so much for allowing us to come before you to adopt our proclamation. As you know, this is National Adoption Awareness Month, where the theme is taking small steps, moves, open doors. So we just want to let you, thank you all for everything that you have done, your support, it means a lot to us. We could not have done this without these fine social workers that are behind me and those who are at the office still continuously working so that we can provide a permanent home for the children that are in our care. Since January, we have finalized 14 adoptions, and we are working continuously to try to provide a permanent plan and finalize at least 17 more adoption, as we have 17 children who are currently free for adoptions. So again, we would like to say thank you for your continued support as we continue to find permanency for the children who are in our care.
Thank you. Thank you. (APPLAUSE). Thank you. I appreciate you. Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you. Yep. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. I appreciate you. Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you. Yep. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Yep. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate you. Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Yep. Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate you. Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Yep. Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[1771.01]
through from our designer to the contractor, whether it be surveying or equipment acquisition, things that the designer's not being paid for, but the actual activity is being done under their contract. So I just want to preface that with those comments and let Katie take over from here.
Good morning, vice chairman and commissioners. On November 21st, 2022, the board approved the project agreement for the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund Grant to construct improvements at Heinz Farm Park, including an inclusive playground, two picnic pavilions, accessible sidewalks, and additional parking. The county has since gone through the bidding process for design services and has selected the firm Alfred Benash &amp; Company for the project. The attached contract would engage Alfred Benash &amp; Company for design and overall project management of the Heinz Farm Park project. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the contract with Alfred Benash &amp; Company in the amount not to exceed $131,450 and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second. Any comments or discussion from the board members?
I definitely have something I'd like to say about this, and thank you very much, Mr. Smithman, for sharing what you did about how you see the location of this to be not affecting other things that might come up as a plan. And I know, I've mentioned this to you, at least Katie, I'm not against improving the park at all, however, I do feel still that it is inappropriate for us to be working on something without having the big picture in mind. And so I don't feel like, I feel like this is still putting the cart before the horse, and I feel things like the lease of the horse area needs to be discussed. We need to look at it maybe in a workshop forum, all of us together, before we start moving forward on anything. So I won't support it, but that's why.
Any other comments or discussion? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, it opposes, it passes five to two, or excuse me, four to two. All right, thank you very much. Okay, moving now to item 5C, North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Grant. Mr. Smithman?
Yes, Social Services Director Susan Tipton will be coming forward to present the item.
Vice chair and commissioners, the Department of Social Services receives grant funding from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Public Health, to administer the Adolescent Parenting Program through Peers Family Development Center. The contract forms must be reviewed and signed annually through the Board of County Commissioners serving as the Consolidated Human Services Board. It is respectfully requested that the Board of County Commissioners, serving as the Consolidated Human Services Board, authorize the chairman to execute the following forms included in the agenda packet. These forms are the state certification and the EVP verification form. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. And we're going to move on now, Mr. Smithman, to item 5D, which is the Onslow United Transit System Subrecipient Agreement for Grant Funds.
Jennifer Baumgartner will be coming forward to present this grant award for our Onslow Transportation System.
No point of order. I kind of missed that one, I think. Did I miss something?
Yeah. E, comprehensive opiates.
No, we're on D.
On the other side.
No, no, we're on D.
On D. Give me a second. We're having technical difficulties up here.
There's E after D.
I got B. We did the Human Services Grant, and now we're on the United Transit.
You're correct.
Yeah, it's on D.
You're correct.
I was correct. Thank you.
My bust.
It's all comical until somebody gets hurt.
It is.
So let's go to item D, 5D, Onslow United Transit System Subrecipient Agreement for Grant Funds. I'm sorry about that. Go ahead, ma'am.
That's okay. Good morning, vice chairman and commissioners.
That was me.
On October 2nd, 2023, the Board of Commissioners accepted the Funding Year 2024 Rural Operating Assistance Program, or ROPE, grant funds from the North Carolina Department of Transportation in the amount of $288,288,863. The subrecipient of these funds will be the Onslow United Transit System, or better known as OUTS. The Subrecipient Agreement for the Funding Year 2024 ROPE's Funds establishes the terms, conditions, and respective responsibilities of the county and grant subrecipient OUTS. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the subrecipient agreement for the Funding Year 2024 ROPE funds, and if approved, authorize the interim county manager to sign on behalf of the county.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move now to item 5E, which is the Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Use Program Grant.
Mr. Knapp, I'm going to turn over the next three items to Carrie Sanders.
Good morning, vice chairman and commissioners. Onslow County has been awarded a three-year federal grant through the Department of Justice, the Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Use Program, in the amount of $1,286,810. These funds will be used to expand substance use treatment in our Onslow County Detention Center. It will also be used to enhance court programming that identifies and intervenes with youth that are impacted by parental or family substance use and support recovery housing. The grant includes funds for a detention officer, two licensed clinical addiction specialists, and case management services. The first year funding is to begin October 1 of 2023 in the amount of $423,063. So it is respect, excuse me, it is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider accepting the Department of Justice grant for the Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Use Program and authorize Carrie Sanders, Consolidated Human Services Director, Assistant County Manager, to sign any necessary documents to ensure fiscal reimbursement on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any comments or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Sanders.
Thank you.
And now we'll move to item 5F, Onslow County Veterans Treatment Court Discretionary Grant Program. Ms. Sanders?
Yes, so Onslow County was awarded another federal grant, a four-year federal grant from the Department of Justice, in the amount of $949,976. This grant supports and enhances our Onslow County Veterans Treatment Court. The grant covers the salaries for the coordinator, the case manager, and the mentor coordinator positions through the administrative offices of the court. This grant will also cover a data coordinator and an evaluator for the program. The first year funding is to begin October 1, 2023, in the amount of $236,243. So it is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider accepting the Department of Justice grant for the purpose of the Veterans Treatment Court and authorize Carrie Sanders, the Consolidated Human Services Director and Assistant County Manager, to execute the necessary documents on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Second? Anybody?
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Do I have any comments or discussion from the panel? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, Carrie, you're still on the hot seat. So we'll go to item 5G, which is the Addiction Counseling and Training Associates Contract for Veterans Treatment Court.
On October 2nd, 2023, the Board of Commissioners accepted a grant, a federal grant, through the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration for the expansion of the Onslow County Treatment Court. Addiction Counseling and Training Associates will provide for the execution of that grant to include its, to include its successful implementation, evaluation, and to ensure compliance with the federal grant. This is a five-year contract in the amount of $80,000 per fiscal year. The grant funds cover the cost of this grant, and the project is to begin September 30th of 2023 and end September 29th, 2028. So it is respectfully requested that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners consider approval of the five-year contract with Addiction Counseling and Training Associates, LLC, in the amount of $400,000, and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county. Now answer any questions.
Motion approved.
You have a motion? You got a second? Any questions or comments? I've got one comment. I just went through three items here that are, that are related to funding for mental health and opioids and et cetera, and I'm very impressed that we're, we must have one heck of a grant writer that is going out and searching for these grants and putting us in form, and we're getting authorized the money. It's money that I know the sheriff can use and this county can use, and I commend the people who are doing that, because mental health is the biggest issue in this country right now, I can tell you. And it's not getting any better any soon. In any way we can combat it, any, any method that we can use to provide appropriate treatment and et cetera, that's significant to me. And I just want to applaud whoever the grant writer, I can't remember her name. I know she's here, or she's in this building. But whoever wrote the grants for these particular proposals, I commend you for doing a great job. Thank you, Carrie. Now, we need to take a vote.
We need to take a vote.
Okay. Lost track of myself. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item 5H, Mr. Smithman, which will be budget amendments.
Budget amendments to propose, and Mr. Prince will be presenting those items for you.
Good morning, vice chairman and commissioners. This morning I have five amendments for you. Four are related to additional grant revenues the county has received, and the other is SRO equipment. Budget amendment number 27 is related to the previously approved COSEP grant. This will increase grant revenues and expenditures to receive the funding from the Department of Justice related to COSEP. It will be total $423,063, and will cover the needs of the program for the first of the four years. The VTC Discretionary Grant is budget, budget number 28. It was previously approved today, and this will increase revenues and expenditures by $236,243 for the remainder of the year. The Low Income Household Water Program recently sent $92,313 to the county. This budget amendment increases the revenues and expenditures to allow those benefits to be given to our taxpayers. The JAG Gas Mask Grant, or Budget Item Number 30, increased grant revenues and expenditures to receive funding from the Department of Justice totaling $17,250 for the purchase of gas mask filters and voice enhancement equipment. Budget Item 31, SRO Supplies and Equipment, increases revenues and expenditures for additional revenue provided to the county for the purchasing of equipment related to our SROs. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the listed budget amendments for approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving now to item six, Mr. Smithman, we have appointments, and I think the first one up is Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Yes, sir. And you are asked to, to reappoint Ms. Stephanie Kane in seat 22, or I'm sorry, not reappoint, appoint Ms. Stephanie Kane in seat 22 for the remaining unexpired two-year term.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And moving now to our last item on the agenda, which is going to be item 6B, Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board. Mr. Smithman?
Yes, sir, you've received an application from Mr. Wesley Watson to fill a remaining two-year term in the private sector category of the Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board this afternoon, or this morning.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, with that being said, we don't have any items to discuss on the consent agenda items, and Mr. Smithman, it's your time in the batter's box.
Well, thank you, sir. I appreciate it very much. What an efficient meeting. I'm sure they're all just like this, right? It's been a short amount of time that I've been your interim county manager, but I have learned a lot very quickly. The reception has been outstanding. Our employees are exactly the way I remember them, which are extremely hardworking, wanting to do good work, and looking for us, those of us around, you around the dice, and us in management, to provide them the tools and resources they need to do great work. That's what they want to do, and it's obvious to me, it was that way 15 years ago and is still that way here today. Onslow County government is in a terrific place. When you consider where we were 15 years ago to where we are today, it's a different, it's a different organization, and it's one that has every tool it needs to be successful. There's not one thing I can ask you for that we don't already have. Now we need to spend our energy tooling our organization toward achieving excellence. We do very well with what we do. Now let's take it to the next step. And the atmosphere, the employees, and the resources you've provided make that very, very possible, and I look forward to helping you do that. Regardless of how long I'm in this transition, transitional period with you, I will continue to promise to move forward with increasing transparency, improving government, customer service, and above all, providing service excellence in everything we do. We're not going to get there today, and we're not going to get there before Christmas, but we are going to get started. So I look forward to working with you for the foreseeable future, and if there's anything I can do to help, just please let me know. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Smithman, and we're going to start off with commissioners' comments, and I think we'll start off with you, Mr. Price.
Okay. I was pleased to attend the community conversation with the Jacksonville Board of Realtors addressing some of the challenges facing Onslow County, and enjoyed that. Commissioner Bennett was a part of that and had a lot to add about what was going on with Onwasa and other things he had touched with. Also, we had our Public Safety Memorial to honor those who had given their lives in service to the public, and so that was an excellent service there with the Public Safety Memorial. I'm pleased to announce that I was appointed to continue serving on the Public Education Steering Committee, so I've done that since 2017. The North Carolina Association of County Commissioners has different steering committees for these different issues, and also my fellow commissioners have appointments as well that will probably be announced in Commissioner Carpenter and Commissioner Scott. So I'll be continuing to serve on that public education. So I'm glad, glad to get that appointment, because I enjoy doing that. Congratulations to our high school teams that made the North Carolina High School Athletic Association playoffs, and to the Jacksonville Cardinals who continue to advance. Next week, I believe they play Southern Alamance at Southern Alamance, if I'm not mistaken. Also, this evening at the main branch of our public library, there will be a showing, a viewing of The Veterans Battlefield. It's a film that the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners produced, where they go out and they interview veterans who chronicle the challenges that they face transitioning to civilian life. And so while you're in service, you know what the mission is. You're very mission-minded. And so now, as these veterans transition, they, they talk about some of the struggles that they, or challenges that they face, and so it's good for us as a county to be aware of those challenges and respond to that, and individuals and nonprofits as well. So try to make it out to the main branch of the public library at 5:00 PM for that. Other than that, I believe that's it, vice chairman.
Okay, we'll move across the board here to Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I wanted to welcome our interim county manager, Mr. Smithman. We're glad to have you on board. And I wanted to mention real quickly the 40th Anniversary Beirut Memorial Service, which was a beautiful event and very well attended. Beirut Memorial Service, which was a beautiful event and very well-attended. Also, would mention that Commissioner Scott and I were able to attend the Regional Transportation Summit in New Bern and learn a little bit about what's going on in transportation in eastern North Carolina. Real, wanted to mention a couple of things about Onwassa, though. As Chairman of the Onwassa Board, I wanted you to know that Onwassa recognized many months ago, there was an issue with water pressure in North Topsail Beach, especially during the summer when the tourists are in, and we embarked on a, on a effort to fix that problem, and we're about to contract to build a pump station that'll help increase the water pressure on North Topsail Beach. I don't know if we can get it done by next summer, but we'll be in, well underway, and maybe we can solve some of those problems with water pressure. And I would also mention that sometime this week, Onwassa is going to close the deal with Pluris Systems and purchase the sewer systems in Hubert and Snead's Ferry that belong to Pluris. It's going to add over 7,000 sewer customers to Onwassa's accounts, and to give us the ability and to expand sewer service in Snead's Ferry and Holly Ridge, particularly where it's definitely needed, Holly Ridge growing the way they are. So that's a little bit of update about Onwassa, and I'll go from there. Thank you all for being here.
Okay, now we'll slide it over to Mr. Scott.
Okay, well, it's definitely been a busy week or two. I had, I had the privilege of this past week in being, being at the Pow Wow. If you've never had the opportunity to go see our Native American heritage, I encourage you to do so. It was a, it was an eye-opener. As a couple of the Commissioners have stated, I feel privileged that, that I've been selected to be on the public safety, the agriculture, and public health for, for the Federation. I look forward to working with everybody that we can, and just be safe. I thank you for allowing me to serve, and I look forward to continuing. Thank you.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, just wanted to say how very glad I am to see the community working together when there's dire circumstances come up, although I wasn't here for the aftermath of Florence nor the COVID crises that affected the way everybody worked together here, but knowing what Holly Ridge, Mayor Wenzel, and his team have done down there, and worked so well with Jacksonville coming in to help out, as well as, you know, what we're planning to do here for them, it's just a very heartwarming thing to see the community pull together when we all are needed to step up and help each other out. Yes, I am actually going to be serving, and I'm very excited about this. I was selected to serve on the Tax and Finance Steering Committee with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and I'm looking forward to gleaning all that I can to help, in my knowledge, and hopefully share that with the others here on the board to impact that area of our work here. Have a great week. It's going to be a beautiful one.
Commissioner Buchanan?
Thank you. Thank everybody for being here, and have a nice day.
All right, real quick, I just, I appreciate Rick, you're always here at the meetings with your lovely wife, Lisa. It's good to see you guys here interacting with us and sharing information from North Topsail Beach. I think that's, that's badly needed, and it was good to see Jeff Wenzel here. He's always here. As you can tell, these two individuals are striving to make their community better, and I really appreciate that. Getting on to the Pow Wow, my wife attended the Pow Wow Sunday. I've been in attendance to the Pow Wow in previous year, or last year, and that's a significant, that's a great event. We have Native Americans that are American citizens, obviously, that served our country, and they also honored all the veterans there, all the veterans that were present, didn't matter what walk of life, and I think that's commendable, and that's a good thing, because like I said, we have some veterans on this board. We have some veterans that have a Purple Heart, no names mentioned, from their combat experience, and we have others as well, so I just want to thank everybody for what they've done for this country, and they continue to do. David, it's good to have you onboard. It's been a short, short trip as of right now, but I think that you've got a great handle on things, your intellect, your insight, your sense of humor. It keeps things uplifted, and I'm looking forward to working with you in the future and to get some issues resolved that we can do it in a, in a team environment, so to speak, and push on. And that kind of segues my, my thinking process into some of the projects that we have here. Some of us oppose certain things, and some of us vote for certain things, but the biggest thing that this board needs to do is to unite on issues, whether we agree or disagree. If a majority of the board votes on a particular issue, we still may disagree, but it is incumbent upon us to make sure that we do everything possible to fulfill the direction of the board, to make things work. In other words, we need to work together, we need to listen to each other, respect each other's opinions without getting upset, and we need to focus in on the positive results of this Commissioners, because as, as an entity, as seven members strong, we're a powerful entity together, and if we vote on something and it's the majority, then we need to do whatever we need to do to support the board's decision, right or wrong, whether we agree or disagree. We need to point out those deficiencies if we see them, but we need to work together to make things happen and accomplish the goals that we have. We have a very tough tax season, or tax season, budget season coming up. It's already started. David, you got your hands filled with all your department heads, and, you know, we'll be sitting down here in the near future to, to show what, or to basically decide what our priorities are for the county, and it's up to the county manager, interim manager, to work within those confines, and those confines are pretty, pretty difficult, but we have a very, very strong fund balance that we're very, very proud of. It's the strongest it's been in about seven or eight years, and hopefully we'll come out on the better end of it next, next budget cycle, and we can move forward with Onslow County. But on behalf of the chairman, Tim Foster, he's on his way back from Charlotte, and he couldn't be here today, so I wanted to pass on his messages. He apologizes for not being here, but I don't think he's too, too disappointed about that because his Indianapolis Colts won against the Panthers, so he's happy, and I know he's smiling driving from Charlotte back here, but that's another story that we'll talk about later. But anyway, he just wanted me to convey my best wishes to everybody. We'll see you at the next meeting. Other than that, do we have a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We are adjourned.[1775.15][1775.15][music]